Hello, my name is Kristi. I would like to welcome you to the Hillsborough City Council Candidates Forum for Ward Seats Open for Election. This forum is being hosted by the Hillsborough Public Library and presented and moderated by the Hillsborough Chamber of Commerce. Our moderator for today's event is Deanna Palm, the President of the Hillsborough Chamber. Today, you will hear local candidates running for Hillsborough City Council positions. There are three city council seats up for election on November 3rd. This Candidates Forum provides the community an opportunity to hear candidates make their cases for the November's election. The audience can submit questions for the candidates to the Q and A option on Zoom. These questions will be vetted by the moderator and some questions will be asked at the end of the session schedule based on time allowed. I would also like to let you know that the Hillsborough Libraries offer safe, secure ballot drop sites at both the Brookwood and Shute Park Libraries. If you have more questions about secure ballot drop sites, please contact the library and we would be happy to let you know where they are. Now, I would like to present our moderator for today, Deanna Palm.
Good morning. Thank you, Kristi, and thanks to all of you for joining us and attending this morning. I'll just provide a brief overview of how the program will run today. None of the candidates have received the questions in advance. Each candidate will have two minutes for opening remarks. We will have four questions for the candidates and they will have one minute for their responses. Candidates will then have a one-minute closing comment. And as Kristi mentioned, we'll take questions from the audience as time allows. Any questions from our candidates? All right, let's get started.
I'm Kimberly Culbertson, a 22-year resident of downtown Hillsborough. And when we picked up the keys to our little wooden house after we walked the Fourth of July Parade, Hillsborough was a big, small town, and I fell in love. Sean and I spent lazy mornings at the Saturday farmer's market, and the quiet tree-lined streets were a respite from Portland's hustle. The Macs was brand-new, and it made going to my job as a stockbroker in the city easy and comfortable. I knew that I would grow a garden, share with my neighbors, and settle in. In the years since, Hillsborough has grown by more than 50%. People from all over the world come to Hillsborough to live, work, play, and learn. I've been involved in the process of how we grow for most of that time, supporting neighborhoods and bringing the ideas of our residents to the city council as a part of the Hillsborough 2020 Vision and Hillsborough 2035. I volunteer on the Board of the Willemynt West Habitat for Humanity to build family wealth through affordable homeownership. I strive with 603 other members to bring a full-service grocery back to downtown Hillsborough through the Hillsborough Food Co-op. And all of these endeavors have given me a depth of experience that will help us through the changes that are coming as a result of our new normal. And the opportunities coming from bonds and levies passed in recent years have to be used carefully and with the people of Hillsborough front and center. As a servant leader, I am thoroughly prepared to serve you on the Hillsborough City Council, and it would be my honor to be your voice.
Law order. I also support the City of Hillsborough Police 100%, the Washington County Sheriff's Office, and the Oregon State Patrol. I support increasing the funding for the law enforcement agencies. I support the Constitution of the United States and the laws of the United States and the federal agencies. I also support the Constitution of the State of Oregon and all federal court and state judges and courthouses. I support all federal and state law enforcement agencies. I also support small businesses, and I support lower taxes and less government agencies. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Tom. Alexander?
Well, thank you again, everybody, for being here. I really do appreciate the time. And first off, you know, if you want to go to FloresForHillsboro.com and get more information on what we're doing, that would be great as well. And to start off, you know, I've got five kids and two grandkids. You know, all of but one live in Hillsborough. I'm very fortunate to say that my son joined the United States Marine Corps and is now stationed in San Diego, working on the F-35. It's a true honor, but I'm also proud of all my other kids and my grandkids. So, you know, one of the things that I do want to tackle is the housing. We've got House Bill 2001 that was passed last year, and we need to start focusing on. The homelessness, homeless, houseless situation here in Hillsborough is becoming more and more apparent, and we need to be able to take care of that as well. What I would suggest is we work with our local nonprofit organizations. We have great organizations. We have Centro Cultural. We have Delante Mujeres, you know, with entrepreneurship to give them some more business. And then we also have Hacienda that are doing a lot of great work, you know, around the Portland metro area. And the other thing is, you know, accountability. Not just fiscal responsibility and accountability, but, you know, having the hold other people accountable for contracts that we make with them or, you know, anything like that. We need to be able and ensure that those contracts are being fulfilled on time and with the money allotted that we've been given, that they've been given. So, I want to be a voice for the city and, you know, just hold everybody accountable, ourselves accountable as city council members and our mayor and our city managers. And then creation of small businesses, I think is key and important. You know, we've seen, my wife is a small business owner. She's a doctor here locally. And, you know, we've seen the rise in and how they can make a difference in our city, right? After all, they do pay fees and taxes here locally, and we want to make sure to keep those local folks, you know, static and, you know, moving forward as well. So, for me, you know, being here, we just got an opportunity to fulfill a long-life dream, to be able to afford our first house, and it's just been a tremendous journey. And I wanted to make sure and fix my house first and take care of my family first before I was able to join and join this race. So, I was a little late, but here I am, and we will take care of business. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexander. John?
All right, let me start that again. I'm John Kinsky, and I want to thank the Hillsborough Chamber of Commerce for coordinating this forum, the Hillsborough Public Library for managing the forum Zoom session. And I also want to thank the other candidates for city council for volunteering to serve the community. I don't think I'm going to need the full two minutes for my comments. There's really only one reason why I'm voting or why I'm running for Hillsborough City Council. I believe that Oregon, Washington County, and Hillsborough are headed for some hard financial times, and I want to make sure that somebody's advocating for the residences and the business owners when the budget crunches begin. I believe that all governments have agendas, goals, interests, that sometimes differ from other people and certainly the people that they serve. And city governments are no different, particularly when hard times hit their budgets. I've been involved in local government for a long time, and so my experience suggests that there are a few things that you can do to kind of mitigate those things. And so, if elected, I want to make budgeting decisions more accountable to residents and business owners. I want to reduce the size and scope of local government before increasing fees or taxes. And I want to focus on decreasing the number of ordinances and codes actively. Thank you. I'll yield my remaining time.
Thank you, John. Catherine?
Am I unmuted? All right. First, I'd like to say it's an honor to be seated here with such a distinguished panel. I can't in two minutes begin to inform you on the complexities of my opinions on so many issues. I can't accomplish that with a website, but I do strongly encourage you to visit my website, votecatherinere.com, to get a better understanding of where I stand on several issues concerning city council. My primary concern is our national debt and the frivolous attitude surrounding the spending of tax dollars. Our national debt is $26.6 trillion. How is it that we're still spending money like a bottomless pit? Squeezing more tax money out of the citizens isn't the answer. They pay too much already. Responsible spending is the solution. If I don't practice that in my personal life, I lose my house, my property, my credit, and sometimes even face criminal charges. I, as a government, protected from suffering the same repercussions. City council makes a lot of decisions that concern housing, development, environment, homelessness, basic livability. Those are some heavy-hitting decisions. I'm not an expert in any one of those fields, but I do my homework. I'm pragmatic and level-headed. I will do my research, and I will take into consideration how these decisions affect you, the citizen. Our country is going 100 different directions right now. The media and politicians seem determined to keep us scared and divided because frankly, we're easier to control if we're divided. I love my country, and I've watched it deteriorate into a cesspool of incivility, hatred, anger, division, narcissism, ingratitude. We have lost a common goal. We've withdrawn into our own circles. We point fingers at each other. And while you may not like to hear it, the one thing that binds us together is that we're all Americans. You can love your country without loving everything about it, to which I say, do what you can individually to improve it. Hating it does not improve it. I also don't believe government is or should be the answer to all of our problems. Right? As for my decision to run for positions, there are decisions for the city to be made, and I would love a chance to represent you.
Thank you, Catherine. Gina?
Good morning. Yes, my name is Gina. Thanks for having us here this morning. My family and I have been residents here in the Hillsborough area for over 20 years. I'm a former educator here in the Hillsborough School District, and I had that time to really see programs grow, the growth as families came in, opening of new schools, and just seeing what the families needed at that time. I'm currently a school administrator in Portland Public Schools. I'm a mom to three boys ages 19, 15, and 10, and I am a wife to my husband, who is a small business owner. I would say about a year and a half ago is probably when I decided that I really wanted to do something and looking at this run for city council. It was really at that time when I could see that there was an opportunity to serve a community that's given us so much, helped us raise our three boys, and really provided a landscape that hopefully my sons will also want to stick around and be a part of Hillsborough. But over the last several years, I did notice that as I watched things grow and decisions being made, I started to ask a lot of wondering questions around. I wonder who was at the table when these projects were conceived? Whose voice was there? Why is the project in this part of town and not in this part? And who will it benefit in the long run? And really looking at being inclusive and using our time and money efficiently. So, now that I'm in this position to run, to serve in this way, I'm looking forward for that opportunity. I'm someone who leads with compassion, growth, and integrity, something that I do every day in my job as we are getting through distance learning, supporting my staff and community, and working with a lot of agencies in order to help my family survive from week to week. So, that in itself are skills that I hope to bring along with me. And also, just this journey has helped out a lot in meeting lots of people along the way. Thanks.
All right, we're going to move to our first question. And just as a reminder, there are one-minute responses. Our order will be Thomas, Alexander, John, Catherine, Gina, and Kimberly. And our first question is, if elected, what is your top priority and what specifically will you do to achieve it? Tom?
Law and order is the first priority. And what I would do to achieve that is make sure that there's sufficient number of police available in the city of Hillsborough, both online and on reserve in case there are any serious law and order problems in the city of Hillsborough.
Thank you, Tom. Alexander?
All right. I think one of my top priorities is going to be housing. As we can see, Hillsborough is growing, and we need to be able to make sure, put the infrastructure that's needed, adequate infrastructure that's needed, such as, you know, we thrive on parks, we thrive on, you know, having community members, you know, enjoy what we have here in Hillsborough. So, you know, again, going back to House Bill 2001, we need to be able to figure out how to fiscally and responsibly make that happen here moving forward. You know, we're, you know, taking a look at our water, our sewage, taking a look at, you know, what low-income families need, middle families need, and above, right? I found, you know, we fell into this house, and we have a great feeling. But, you know, there are people who are retiring, and we need to be able to build houses for those folks. We need to be able to build apartments for folks that can't afford to buy a house. But we also need to be able to have affordable housing. My suggestion is going to be to be able to have a, out of 10 houses, at least have one of those houses be affordable housing for anybody with low income. And that's been proven to be effective in Bethany area. And I think that we could definitely do that here by providing some kind of incentive for our builders and homeowners that are coming through.
Thank you, Alexander. John? John, you're on mute.
Doggone it, I need to, I need to figure that one out. All right, so my, my top priority is fiscal responsibility, and there are going to be all sorts of trade-offs that need to be made. We don't have infinite resources. We don't have infinite capacity. But there will be an endless number of claims made on the resources that we do have. So, my first thing would be to basically make the budgeting decisions, particularly as we head into some hard times. We prioritize core city services above everything else. That would be fire, police, library, transport, water. Everything else beyond that, well, that may have to be reduced or in some way modified. So, it's more of a, it's more of a guiding set of principles rather than specific actions. There are any number of things that can be done along those lines, but that's what would guide me.
Thank you, John. Catherine? Catherine, you're on mute.
We're good?
Yeah.
Sorry. I said, I agree with you, John. I think budgeting is the primary concern. I think our budget affects all the different subjects that we're talking about today. And where we delegate them is going to be of real importance. And I think we are headed for some really difficult financial times, so we got to squeeze that belt a little bit. I also agree with Alexander. I think sometimes, you know, the budget gets out of control. I mean, you accept a bid on building, and somehow it keeps getting extended and extended and extended. I mean, you know, there's a project around here that's already $20 million over budget, so that's a problem. That's a big problem. We have to hold them accountable. Secondly, I think I want to make it much easier for small businesses. I think they're the backbone of our city, of most cities, and we need to reduce some of the regulations and some of the zoning. I would like to see a little bit more multi-use zoning. And again, it's all tied together with the financial responsibility.
Thank you, Catherine. Gina?
There is so much truth in everything that everyone has said. And so, I think one of my top priorities is to take this equity statement that has been established within the city of Hillsborough and move it into action plans. There's plenty of organizations around us and other governing bodies who have done this in order to apply those principles to the decisions that they make, whether it be around police, whether it be around housing, whether it be how we support our small businesses. But everything that we say that we love about Hillsborough won't be realized until everybody is represented and everyone is considered in their needs. And this equity work, even though sometimes it seems to be something trivial for some folks, is actually the heart of how we represent the people that we are elected for. So, that would be one of my priorities is how to put those principles into action around decision-making, around all these things that have been mentioned by my fellow candidates.
Thank you, Gina. Kimberly?
The most important thing for me is humanely housing those who are unhoused currently. And also, those who are inadequately housed. Housing should be walkable. It should have amenities close to it, and there should be transit available to get people to work without causing traffic jams. We'll all be happier, healthier people if we're all adequately housed and can get to our needs, get our needs met during the day without getting stuck in traffic.
Thank you, Kimberly. Now, we'll move to question two. Our order for question two will be Alexander, John, Catherine, Gina, Kimberly, and Tom. And the question is, racial equity and police reform have been conversations taking place at city council. What are your thoughts about what types of reforms need to take place at the Hillsborough Police Department? And how can the city of Hillsborough ensure it's serving all members of our community? Alexander?
You know, one of the things is that I appreciate the most is that being part of the Council for Economic and Racial Equity for Prosper Portland, I've seen the inequalities over there, right? And, but the beauty of it is, I don't, I don't see as much inequality here in Hillsborough. You know, I got a chance to interview sergeants to become lieutenants with Chief DeBaroski a few years back. And I'll tell you, the equality and the quality of officers that we have here that need to be supported is being continued to be a work in progress. But I'll tell you, folks, that we have a diverse police department, and our current chief is also doing a lot of great things around it. We have a lot of administrators that are working towards that equality even more so that we don't fall into that inequality issues that we currently see in Portland.
Thank you, Alexander. John?
Yeah, so it's a great question, and I would agree with Alexander. I don't know if there is that big of a problem here in Hillsborough specifically. And I sat through the August 18th working session or work session that the council had, and I listened to everything that they were talking about. And frankly, the thing that amazed me the most was the willingness of the police chief to actually engage in the conversation, be willing to make some accommodations. But the thing that I think is most important is, let's discover what we actually mean when we're talking about inequality or inequity in this case, right? So, I'm not sure that we know what that means, so I'm not sure that we can move forward with any kind of particular policy or set of policies.
Thank you, John. Catherine?
Make sure I'm not on mute. I'm not mute, right? So, I'm not aware, like the former candidates, I'm not aware of any huge problems in our area. So, I don't know, I guess I agree with you, John. I agree with you again, that we have to find out what you mean by, you know, racial indiscretion or what's going on, what kind of problems we're having. What I've seen from the local police has been nothing but sterling behavior. I mean, I see a lot of good things they do. They do things and work really hard, and they do things that I'm not willing to do, and I think they're doing a really good job of keeping the streets safe. But again, for, to really, for me to expound more on that, I would have to know more of the details on what you mean, like what the problems are, then I can address them.
Thank you, Catherine. Gina?
This is always one that some people could take it over here very intellectually and how to work with this, but some are also taking it over here as through lived experiences. So, I have had a very good experience as an educator, as a person, as a family, with our Hillsborough Police Department. I've also worked with them in a professional capacity as an educator as well as in Portland. No, we're not Portland. But during that, that beginning of June protest that we saw for Black Lives Matter, we heard stories that had, that came from my residents that had to do not just with things that need to be reformed, but also just lived experiences of how they felt and how, whether or not they felt that they were a part or welcomed into our community. And I think that shocked a lot of people because we think everything is okay, and it might be going okay as functioning from day to day. And we have many great police officers in our force. But I think the reform is, comes around the listening and learning what all of this does mean for the people who are having these different lived experiences, and how can we make it so people feel safe in their own community, can look to authority as partners to help keep their family safe here in Hillsborough.
Thank you, Gina. Kimberly?
I think that the police reforms that have been proposed by our current chief are actually really excellent in scope. And we should be fitting the training and the abilities to the call loads that are happening. And those are predominantly mental health, homelessness, and addiction outcomes. So, that training should become practice. That practice should become a regular behavior, and that behavior should be a culture here in Hillsborough, a culture of equity and justice. That is how Hillsborough will lead in Washington County and in Oregon if we can make the culture of racial equity and justice a calling card of our city. And I look forward to working with many organizations as well as my fellow city commissioners or counselors.
Thank you, Kimberly. Tom?
Lawyer, I've dealt with the police in particular cases many times over the years. And I don't say that the Hillsborough Police are not perfect. They, they're not perfect, but they, they do a very good job, as I see it, as a lawyer. And also, I was a circuit court pro temp judge for a year and saw the difficulties that police officers are presented with on a daily basis. And so, they might not be perfect. They do a darn good job, in my opinion. As far as training is concerned, upgraded training is certainly, would certainly be beneficial to the Hillsborough Police Department. I have this to say about the Hillsborough Police Department. They saved my wife's life once, and I'm eternally grateful for what they've done for my family. I support them 100%. I also support upgraded training. And I think they do a very good job under very difficult circumstances. And I would be strongly against city council members who second-guess police officers in very difficult situations where life and death is on the line based on a secondary or a quick decision that has to be made.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move to question three. The order for question three will be John, Catherine, Gina, Kimberly, Thomas, and Alexander. And question three is, what is your understanding of the relationship between the city council and the following: the city manager, the city utilities commission, and the planning commission? John? John, you're on mute?
You would think that I would learn that one. Okay, so the city manager is the, is the chief administrative officer, and the city council provides direction. The city council actually does not, cannot provide any direction to city staff, right? It has to go through the city council. City commission, what was the next, what was the other position?
City manager, city utilities commission, and the planning commission.
Well, the planning commission is an advisory board that reports. reports, approves, recommends for approval any decisions that are referred to it. But the city council actually is the one that makes the final decision. And I'm not actually sure what the relationship of the city utilities or facilities manager is to the, to the council, other than the fact that my assumption is that goes through the city manager as well.
Thank you, John. Catherine?
Hey, let's make sure. So I had the pleasure of meeting our own city manager, and I would like the opportunity to work with him some more. I know that the city, the city council hires the city managers. So we're very important as we serve in that capacity. The utilities, I also have to admit, I don't know exactly what the relationship is. But if I have any control or influence on lowering some of the utility prices, I would be involved, I'd love to be involved in that. And then third, the third one was, what did you say? It was the planning commission? I would imagine, yeah? I would imagine we work very, very closely with the planning commission because, you know, they, you know, we approve their decisions or not. So again, I would, I look forward to a good intimate relationship with them and get to know their budgeting and plans.
Thank you, Catherine. Gina?
Just as mentioned before, the city council does, they're, they're the body that creates that vision, brings in people into the process and needs to be representing who they were elected to represent. But creating that vision, and then, as we said, our city manager being that administrative piece that then manages the team within the city, the city staff. And then in regards to the two commissions that we were talking about, they are within the charter. And they, I, I've actually sat in on some of the planning commission ones, and I'm just amazed by, I love it because it's a space for the experts in those different areas to be and to create to fruition this vision that we have for Hillsborough, which then comes back to our council. And I look forward to the opportunity to serve on some of those committees as we are appointed to go and serve along with them and do the work alongside them. So very similar to the framework that I work within now, where you have the people that are experts in certain parts, the people who are the visionaries that bring it all together and, and bring the community together around it.
Thank you, Gina. Kimberly?
Yes, I'm, I'm going to say, you know, everybody's pretty much right on this one. What's really important about the council is that we are to bring the, the people's vision to fruition through the policies that go out through the city manager. The city council controls the budget and forms the budget. And also helps to decide the scope of what utilities can charge and what they should charge. The planning commission is, the city council is a quasi judicial check on the count, on the planning commission. If the planning commission is, you know, if there's significant pushback from a planning commission decision, it is a incumbent upon the city council to right that wrong and make a decision as to what is the correct plan of action. You know, it's, the most important bit about this, though, is the city council is to carry the people's values forward. And that should be at every, every hearing we have, every meeting we have. The people's values should be first and foremost in our minds, all of our people.
Thank you, Kimberly. Tom?
Hi, my opinion, as far as the city council is concerned, is they're the boss. They make the decisions. And so when the city council makes a decision, they have to take into consideration all of the economic and social ideas and benefits that they wish to give to the people of the city of Hillsborough. Some of these decisions are very weighty and difficult, and it takes people with some diligence and abilities taking into consideration various complex factors in making the decisions. But when the city council makes a decision, whether it's in regard to the city manager or the utilities commission, they are the ultimate people that have to take responsibility for their decisions. I think it's very important that all members of the city council take into consideration the various social and economic factors that come into making a final decision, whether it's economic or social.
Thank you, Tom. Alexander?
Yeah, you know, a lot of the things that we talked about or we are here is all very important, you know, a city manager, you know, Mr. Hammett has done a great job so far. He was hired last year officially becoming our manager. And I think he's doing a really good job. And as far as the planning commission and utility commission, you know, all of those report back to the city council members and the city council members, we need to be aware of what's going on. But one of the most important things for me is that I want to see more city involvement. So, you know, as, as city council members and or city employees, I think we should do a better job of, you know, employing that information out there. So we could do, you know, we had, we need more input. Just recently, the water rates issue or concern or, you know, increase proposal. You know, so far, they've only got 88 input, you know? And then so just recently, we did, and they did another, another opportunity for the Latino community, right? So they, they did the whole thing in Spanish, which was great. But we need to do a better job and involve with more people so they don't get surprised.
Thank you, Alexander. Now we'll move to our final prepared question. Question four, the order will be Catherine, Gina, Kimberly, Tom, Alexander, and John. And the question is, what distinguishes you from the other candidates in this race? What specific expertise, passion, and/or experience do you bring to the table? Catherine?
Uh, I don't know that it's unique. I have five children, so does Alexander. I'm a mom, so do the other ladies. I've been a resident of Hillsborough for, you know, 24 years. I've been in the area for 34 years. I've seen it, the changes, just like Gina and the other. I've seen the changes. I'm not real happy with some of the direction that it's going. And I've been a junior politician. I've been involved in other campaigns for other candidates. And I've always been aware of it. I just decided to this time actually do something about it and quit talking about it. So I have a lot of life experience. I've lived overseas. I've had a small business. I've homeschooled. So I've been an educator. I'm still an educator. I've been an English tutor, a violin instructor, involved in the community that way. And I'm really big on the arts, in the arts and music. So I think, I, and I, and I have a willingness and eagerness to learn. And so I will dive in and do my research. I'm also interested in law and mostly financial fiscal responsibility. That's what motivates me.
Thank you, Catherine. Gina?
I think right off the bat, the expertise that I bring is, I actually have a lot of experience in working with different organizations as a participant and as a leader through this equity work, as mentioned before, in order to take it from a vision and a statement to an action plan that carries forward all of these different values that we are stating and that a lot of us have stated here today. And then in regards to my passion, I mean, my passion has always been service. And this is just one way that I feel like I'm equipped to serve my community. And I think other things that are distinguishable is just, I, I'm known for having a collaborative spirit, a collaborative skill set, even when making our way through difficult situations. It's pretty much my job description and what I do right now. And really sticking with projects and seeing them through all the way. And that's a passion of mine as well, just because the decisions you're making, the work that you're making are impacting real people every day. And, and then lastly, I'm not a single issue candidate. This is really a holistic thing that we're talking about as a community. Because right now, with the situation that we're in, representation is going to matter a lot in order for us to come out, not just surviving, but thriving on the end of this when we finally get to a plan and path of recovery.
Thank you, Gina. Kimberly?
I think what distinguishes me the most is the experiences that I've had in doing the Hillsborough 2020 vision process and the Hillsborough 2035 process. I've literally talked to thousands of people about their hopes, their dreams, and their needs from the city. I also spent 10 years talking to people at the Hillsborough Farmers Market about their gardens and making their lives better through, through being able to grow their own vegetables and foods and taking care of their lawns and trees. I actually have done a bit of land use planning in Hillsborough. We had a, a little, a little infill project that wasn't conforming to a process that we had in place. I and quite a number of my neighbors went together. And what we did is we collaborated with the developer to make that development comport with the neighborhood better. And it's a happier, better project for it. We've worked on, we've actually dealt with many projects that have been having to do with infill in downtown. And pretty much it's worked out beautifully for my neighborhood and the neighborhoods that I've weighed in with. So it's the experience that I've had testifying and bringing people's values forward.
Thank you, Kimberly. Tom?
Hi. I think what makes me different from the, the other members that we've been discussing today, talking to, is I spent 46 years as a trial lawyer in state and federal courts here in Oregon, mainly representing individual people, no large corporations in complex litigation involving securities laws and aircraft accidents and automobile accidents and workers' comp injuries. Also, my 32 years in the Marine Corps, two years enlisted, 30 years as commissioned, including a year in combat as an infantry platoon commander in Vietnam in 1968. I also served for a year as a judge in Washington County Circuit Court pro temp when the county ran short of a judge. So those are the things that I think set me apart. Also, I served for a year, for a half a year, as a MP in Vietnam. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to everybody today.
Thanks, Tom. Alexander?
Yeah, first and foremost, Thomas, thank you for your service, sir. I really do appreciate it. And man, my words, I cannot, anyways, I appreciate everything you've done, sir. You know, one of the things that for me is, you know, I've been involved in diversity and inclusion for the last probably seven years very heavily. You know, I've been at Diamond Trucks North America for nine years. The first five years, first seven years I served, first, yeah, first five years I served in the engineering department. And then I moved over to supply chain management. You know, that's taught me a lot, you know, you know, accountability, fiscal responsibility. We want to make sure that any of our suppliers that command, you know, they, they provide us with the product on time. And that's what, that's the kind of stuff that I want to bring in as well. But I've been involved with diversity and inclusion at the company for seven years. I was the board president for Central Cultural, which brings in that diverse amount of people. We served many people of different backgrounds from 2014 to 2018. And I currently serve on the Council for Economic and Racial Equity. And that's also taught me a lot of stuff that, you know, what Portland's facing right now is something that I don't want to see here from gentrification, from rioting, from looting and all that stuff. We need to be able to, you know, face those situations if, if it comes to. And as, as a city council member, I would definitely do my due diligence to have fiscal responsibility, bring forward the accountability to our police department, and bring forward the accountability on ourselves as city council members.
Thank you, Alexander. John?
So I've been involved in local city government for over 10 years here in Oregon. First, over five, over four years as the mayor of the city of Banks. And I moved specifically to Hillsborough when we decided to move because I thought it was a really good city. I thought it was well run at the time. So I got involved in the planning commission. I got it, I got involved in the Planning Zoning Hearing Board. I was on the Advisory Committee for Citizen Involvement. I was also on the Washington County Consolidated Communications Agency prior to that. And if you're not familiar with what that is, that's 911 services for fire and, and police services. So I've been involved, and so I've got a lot of experience. I think that qualifies me uniquely in this particular case. But the other thing that I think sets me apart is because I have been involved in local government for so long, I have a growing sense that the government creates more problems than it solves, often through good intent. And, and so particularly at the local level, there's an opportunity to affect things positively. And that does mean discovering what people want and not coming to these solutions as with an agenda reformed. So I think that uniquely qualifies me as well, sets me apart.
Thank you, John. Now it's time to move to our closing for each candidate.
Gina? Can I interrupt really quick? I just wanted to remind the audience that are attending today. They have an opportunity to put something in the Q and A if they would like to ask a question of the candidates. And so we have room for maybe one or two more questions if someone would like to propose something. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move to our closing remarks. And the order is Gina, Kimberly, Thomas, Alexander, John, and Catherine. And so Gina?
Thank you. So over the last couple of years, this campaign has been quite the journey. And I just want to appreciate all my fellow opponents because it's very obvious that you're all very passionate about Hillsborough. I think the biggest plus for me along this journey is all the people that I've gotten to meet along the way. I'm a little bummed that I haven't met these people earlier in my life or in my time here in Hillsborough, but I'm glad to have them here now. And they have also partnered with me by showing their endorsement of my candidacy, everything from the chamber to the council and the mayor, the Hillsborough firefighters, Washington County Ignite, which is an amazing young group, up and coming, as well as Washco Dems and the Home Builders Association. But all of the community members who have been part of this campaign have been the most amazing. So my appreciation to them. And when I say this, it's because all of those people show a span of people across different beliefs and values because we all realize that our realities right now are so interconnected, no matter how you feel about certain policies and moving forward, that I hope that folks who vote for me see a candidate who is ready to collaborate, who's ready to roll up their sleeves and have uncomfortable conversations and to bring people to the table and voices that maybe weren't there before, that we're now discovering in those different equalities as they rise to the surface during this pandemic. And so I want to bring those with me because Hillsborough is a great place to live. And we know that there are other ways that we continue to improve this environment for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Kimberly?
In 22 years, I've learned that cities are in the business of making homes for people as well as businesses. And to do that, we have to listen and more importantly, care. The heartbeat of a place is so important. And we need to know what people and businesses need. And as city leaders, we have to show up. I think it's really important that you all know that I've been showing up for more than 20 years. I volunteered to do outreach for Hillsborough 2020 and 2035. That's people. But the downtown business partnership, where I've talked to people about their, their business needs, is also a factor that's really important. Is also a factor that's really important. I want to bring parks, streets, transportation, libraries, all those things that make people's lives and businesses better, front and center. Um, really important, you all know, I show up. I work hard and I speak up. And your hopes and dreams and your voice are important to me. I want to bring your hopes, dreams and your voice to the Hillsborough City Council. And um I look forward to seeing how you all vote on November 3rd. I'm Kimberly Culbertson.
Thank you, Kimberly. Thomas? Thomas?
Hi, um, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. And in closing, I'd like to summarize where I stand on various issues that uh. Uh, the city of Hillsborough is presented with and might be presented with. First of all, uh, I support strict enforcement of law and order. I support the city of Hillsborough Police Department, the Washington County Sheriff's Office and the Oregon State Police. I support the Constitution of the United States, laws of the United States and the federal courts, judges and courthouses in all federal buildings. I support the Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws of the State of Oregon and the courts, judges and courthouses of the State of Oregon. I support all federal and state law enforcement agencies. I support small businesses. And the method that I use to uh enforce uh supporting small businesses is I support. Lower taxes and fewer government regulations. I've lived in Hillsborough for 43 years. I like Hillsborough. My kids went to school here and I want to continue to help make Hillsborough a great place to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Thomas. Alexander?
Well, you know, you can find out more information at floorsforhillsboro.com and you can learn more on on different ways you can get involved. But for me, what's most important is going to be hitting the top three priorities in the in the future and that's. Housing situation, you know, with House Bill 2001, we need to be able to adequately. Uh, have the infrastructure for folks that want to move into our city. And then also with that comes addressing the homelessness situation and the houseless situation, you know. Uh, as I said before, we need to be able to build homes uh for folks who are downsizing, those who want to move into those big houses with lots. But also, you know, with folks who need apartments, you know, that don't want to live. And have that, you know, luxury of having a big home or even a downsized home, right? So being able to provide for those folks is going to be important because when we look at homelessness, we need to look at. Is it a drug addiction problem? Uh, you know, what kind of problems are they having? And we need to get that help for them and not just short term, but long term. And have that uh be accessible to them and also being able to create small businesses here in in the city of Hillsborough is going to be. You know, something that we need to be able to thrive on and uh hold ourselves accountable. As uh city councillors and our and our mayor to be able to do that for the future and for a brighter future of Hillsborough. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexander. John?
Yeah, so um, you know, everybody's focused on the federal uh election, um, you know, state and county races. Uh, but the truth is, local city governments have a greater impact on your daily life than really any other level of government. I do believe that there are going to be some hard times and there are going to have to be some difficult decisions that are made. Uh, we will have to trade off. Um priorities because like I said before, we don't have an infinite number of uh resources. We don't have. But we will have an endless uh number of requests for, you know, that limited resource. Um, I can't solve all the issues, but I can try and help uh make life better for my neighbors, myself, the people that I care about and our future citizens. Uh, and I can do that by making our local city government more responsive to residents, to their needs, to the business owners' needs. Uh, you know, and really prioritizing those in terms of some of the hard decisions that are that are going to need to be made. So um. I very much appreciate your vote. I want to thank all of the uh other candidates who are who are running. Thank you for your willingness to serve. And uh please visit kinskeyforhillsboro.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, John, Catherine?
Okay, so first I'd like to say it was really a pleasure seeing everybody uh live. Maybe after all this, we can all go have a beer. Anyway, I, in closing, I'd like to thank the Hillsborough Chamber for making this event possible. Again, if you'd like to see more information, go to votekatherinere.com. And uh shoot me an email about your concerns. I'm genuinely interested. Moving forward, we don't need to imitate failed models of city development. We have many examples to look at. Every major city that implements policies of complicated building restrictions. High zoning regulations, strict urban growth boundaries like LA, San Francisco, New York, Philadelphia, Boston, Seattle, Portland. They have created the most expensive cities to live in in the United States and they're leaving and migrating to places like Houston, Texas to escape business taxes and building regulations. We're all trying to create a society that embraces a wide variety of interests and benefits, all of us. We are an eclectic and varied people. There's no A equals B plan, but I'm on board as wanting to try something different. I advocate for fewer legal restrictions and multi-use zoning. I advocate for government to govern, not control. I advocate for we, the people, to find ourselves again and be responsible for the choices we make. I'm dedicated to serve you as an electric person and I would like to represent you, represent you. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, it looks like we do have time for a couple of questions um from the audience and so I'm just looking at the questions. Um, and I'm just going to go um in order. They don't look like they've been asked before. Um, the order of the first question from the audience will be Catherine, John, Alexander, Thomas, Kimberly and Gina. And the first question is, while most would agree that departments such as fire and police are considered essential. As a city council representative, what role would you like to see the library, library services play in our community? Catherine?
I'm first. So is that to assume that we're considering librarians essential? I mean, so okay, my, I'm not saying that, I'm not trying to undermine the role of librarians at all. I love librarians. I love books. I love reading. I love education. Um, I would say that all jobs are essential when you depend on it for a living, so um I don't know that we could, I think that's a poor choice of delineation. All all jobs are essential when you need to make money. Um, how do I see the library's role? Well, it's it's evolving, just like every form of education. Uh, I don't know specifically what you mean by that question, I guess. Could you clarify the question?
Um, I'm just actually reading it as it was submitted by the audience at this point, so um I'm just going to run down the list. So thank you, Catherine, John.
Yeah, so um I I think in uh in terms of essential services, uh fire and police are essential. Uh, water is essential. Um, some of the utilities, definitely essential. Library services, I would say, is important, but not critical. And by that, I mean. That it is definitely not the first thing that I would cut, but I wouldn't have a problem necessarily with reducing it. At if required to do so in order to meet the needs of other cit-, you know, core city services. Um, I I love our library system. I really do. So I'm not advocating that we reduce it in any way. I'm just, you know, from a, from a purely. Logistical standpoint, there have to be trade-offs made and um and that would be one of the trade-offs that I would make. But we're talking so far away from, you know, the reality of what we would, there's so many other things that we could reduce before we ever got to that point. So it's important, but I wouldn't consider it critical. It's it's a core service.
Thank you, John. Alexander?
Well, you know, I actually do think that um our library system is essential and simply because um. Before COVID-19, you know, my kids would go to the library, spend their time there doing their homework and. And or recent researching, you know, different aspects of their homework. Uh, although given COVID-19 now, you know, I think it's uh unfortunate. Because we know through science that COVID sticks to, you know, paper more than anything else uh so far that we know from science and then. So for that, in that aspect, you know, I think though, the library has done a tremendous job of now doing social distancing and reopening up. Uh, you know, as far as, you know, our fire, I mean, all fire departments and police departments are essential. And should be at the forefront when we're thinking about, you know, uh budget cuts or anything like that, so. But for me, you know, libraries very essential. My kids have used them, you know, we use them all the time, so uh we got to keep them going and figure it out somehow.
Thank you, Alexander. Thomas?
I I love the Hillsborough Library. I've been going there for many years. Hillsborough Library is one of the finest libraries uh in the Portland area. And I support it 100%.
Thank you. Thomas. Kimberly?
Uh, well, as a former latchkey kid, I can make a really, really good uh. Argument for keeping the libraries and expanding their services. Uh. I, when I was a kid, my mother worked full-time, my father worked more than full-time. And oftentimes, the only way that I could get daycare was to go and do homework at the library. Uh, the librarians were very good to me and I'm a lifelong reader. Uh, and that's, that's what we, that's the importance of having the resource. I think. Another thing that the libraries do is they convene exactly what we're doing here today. Bringing people together, bringing diverse ideas and making other people aware of it. Um, I I know that our library uh has HOA meetings and book club meetings, all sorts of great meetings. In fact. My co-op occasionally meets, I have board meetings there.
Thank you, Kimberly. Gina?
Um, I actually interpreted this question a different way in that. I think we've been talking a lot about essential services that we're in charge of as a city council. And library, as far as their role in our community, they've been a huge part of our community even during um this pandemic. They have been innovated, innovative in bringing some sense of normalcy to our residents by finding different ways to get materials out to folks. Allowing them access while still following safety protocols. I mean, I've just been really impressed. Libraries historically have also been a place, a community center for people to come in, people who don't have access to internet and computers and technology to come in and fill out. Applications and find information and to inform themselves on issues and things that are going on in their communities or state. It's been a place where people come to offer those resources that is a safe place for people to be. Um, and so if more than anything, I don't think we highlight the present services that they already have.
Thank you, Gina. So um the order for our second uh question from the audience will be Gina, Kimberly, Thomas, Alexander, John and Catherine. And the second question is, what is your approach to understanding and representing those whose voices are not heard in the city? Gina?
Sure, um. I I believe that sometimes we don't take advantage of different ways of seeking out voices. I think we have our traditional ways of doing that. In which people have to come to us, where we now have to start going out to people and that's who's been most successful in reaching the communities during this time. And actually, if I remember at a work session for the 2035 plan, when they found success with people going out into the community. And bringing surveys out to them and asking them to participate and wanting their voices, that needs to be a part of our new normal, not just. An extra thing that we do in the afterthought. Also, I think we don't, we underutilize people of community influencers that are out there. They might not have an elected position. They might not have an executive job, but they influence their community. Um, and we need to recognize those voices and partner with them as we make our way through all of this and start our recovery because. They are very, very important.
Thank you, Gina. Kimberly?
There we go. Um, yes, I think that Gina's got a really excellent point and, you know. We do a a good job of outreach through the Hillsborough 2020 Vision, Hillsborough 2035 Vision. Um, but we can do more. Uh, we're also already making partnerships with groups like Adelante Mujeres and Central Cultura. Also, Apano. Uh, and that was a big change that I saw this year in our outreach or last year in our outreach. I think that we can start convening religious and cultural leaders. Like people from the Muslim Educational Trust who live here. Uh, also, our schools are a resource that is inestimable. Everybody comes together for the school and if we can, if we can ask people from the schools, the parents and everything. Uh, we can get a clearer and more nuanced idea of what our people need. So I'm, yes, and.
Thank you, Kimberly. Thomas?
Um, everybody in the city of Hillsborough should be listened to. Um, I think that the um city council should keep its uh mind open and. Anyone that has anything to say or present to the city council should be listened to. And everyone should be given an equal opportunity to speak. Thanks.
Thank you, Thomas. Alexander?
Yeah, so you know, when we look at the different opportunities that we have here, all the different uh nonprofit organizations, all the cheerleaders we have, and I'm talking more about. Uh, Mr. Mayor Callaway, that individual, that guy, he is the biggest cheerleader for the city, city of Hillsborough and I appreciate that. So I think we need to do a little bit more of that, you know, to be able to get more people involved and uh be able to be listened to. If we are, if we're not out there talking to them or trying to understand where they're coming from, regardless of where they stand. Uh, maybe they're, you know, scared of, you know, coming out because they're not uh, they're not here legally or. Maybe they're just not known for for somebody who's, you know, making a difference that could feel like they can make a difference in our community. So I think opening up those opportunities for. Having that open door for everybody to come through and I think breaking those barriers is going to be key and important for us to be able to move forward. To have more people involved, so.
Thank you, Alexander. John?
Yeah, so I have to say that I agree with everything that Gina said. Um, I think she was right on the money, actually. I don't know that I would have anything to add. Except that, um, you know, there are new technologies that are available that make finding and uh. Finding people and getting their input much easier and I don't know that the city has actually adapted to that. Um, some of the past uh examples were on the comprehensive plan. They did do a pretty good job of trying to get as much input as they could, but there were obvious opportunities that I think that they missed, so. I I do agree, we need to get more, uh, we need to to go out and find what people think and and work with influencers. Um, but not just restrict ourselves to certain groups. All groups should be represented.
Thank you, John. Catherine?
So clearly, if they're not coming to us, assuming I'm on the board. Uh, then yes, we have to go to them and how we do that is something to consider. I'm not sure how you can reach some of those people. I've seen a pattern, however, and that is that a lot of people don't feel like all these decisions are affecting them or impacting their lives. Until it starts impacting their lives. And then by then, it's many years passed when they had time to make their voices known. So I think part of the problem is that when we do put. When we put the message out, we put it in language that isn't easily understood. So often, it takes an attorney to interpret what it says. You know, so I think we have to bring a language and make it more palatable and in a, in a way that people can understand it, so they actually know what's. So they actually know what's happening in the community. So, um, you know, clearly they're not gonna come to us. We have to find a way to get out into their neighborhoods and into their groups. And everybody's also addressed, you know, the, the interest groups and the spokesperson. So it has to integrate somehow. We have to have better town halls or some coffee clashes or something to get together and get an understanding of what it is people are looking for in their community and how we can help them.
Excellent. Thank you, Catherine. I'm gonna check in with Kristi for a time check. Do we have time for one more? Or, um, should we move to our, um, in our other two city councillors?
Well, it's 11:12. Um, if we did a quick question, because I know you want to give the other two, um, incumbents an opportunity to talk, we could do a quick question, I think.
Well, we could do, if we do one minute per candidate with six minutes. So, um, I'll go ahead and just read the next one. We'll get through it. And, um, hopefully I won't have to repeat it because it's a long one. So here we go. And the order again for the third question is Kimberly, Thomas, Alexander, John, Catherine and Gina. And this question from the audience is, "The homeless issue is a major issue in Hillsborough. I think it is safe to say we all want to be compassionate related to those without a place to live. But with that said, Hillsborough was becoming too much like Portland in that folks are setting up camps everywhere, sleeping on sidewalks, trash all over, and so much more related to being without a home. What are your brainstorming ideas to deal with homelessness?" And again, we'll start with Kimberly. Thank you.
Well, my guiding principle in terms of dealing with homelessness is, uh, humaneness. Uh, currently, we have a lot of people living rough out at Dairy Creek and on the streets of Hillsborough. I'd like to see for the county to step to the plate with the funds that they have to help in a more, um, aggressive way, in a more fulsome way than they have. Um, we have to also be able to, you know, keep, get track of what, we have to get our arms around the problem and, and, and feed that information to the county so that it can be solved. There is a, there is not a tremendous amount that the city of Hillsborough can absolutely do other than move people along currently. In the long run, I would like to see multimodal housing, um, and, and lots of it. Uh, and lots of ways to plug people into services so that they don't become homeless.
Thank you, Kimberly. Thomas?
Homelessness would be to try to get St. Matthews and the other churches in Hillsborough to put together a group, uh, to try to set up a homeless charitable, uh, organization to help the homeless. As a backup position, I would propose to the city of Hillsborough to, uh, either purchase or rent a building in which to temporarily house the homeless and feed them until, uh, we can assist them in finding rental properties.
Thank you, Thomas. Alexander?
Yeah, one of the things that I keep harping on is, you know, utilizing our nonprofit organizations. And one of them that comes to mind is Community Action. They've done a lot of great work in the community already, and I think they can continue doing that. But most importantly, I think we need to figure out if, if they have a drug addiction problem, how do we help that? Again, and mental issues, how do we help that? And, you know, I, I've talked to the homeless that, that are out there, especially on TB Highway. And I'll be honest with you, there's two or three that don't want help. They wanna be on the streets. They say that they, they come down to the city, take some money and then go out and, uh, either out to the woods or whatever. So, you know, and then especially, most importantly, the, the trailers that we have at, at our current parks, right? We, as, although they don't want the help, we need to be able to figure out how to best help them and not create the issue that we have currently in Portland and making it a better place. And I think as city members, city council members, we need to go out to other cities and explore their opportunities and what they deal, how they dealt with it and what we could do to improve.
Thank you, Alexander. John?
Well, um, I don't believe that this is a, uh, exclusive problem to Hillsborough. In fact, it's more regional. And, um, I would say that in many cases, uh, Portland and, and some of the cities are actually contributing to the problem that we're finding here. Um, so, you know, people are coming in on Metro. There are some homeless people that are, that are here. I, like Alexander, I've talked to some of them and, and some don't want the help, but many do, right? So, um, this is one of those situations where we may need to actually uh, join with other jurisdictions to try and find a more regional approach to solving this problem. But one of the things that both Alexander and Thomas said that I agree with is we need to, uh, deal with this not just exclusively from a government level, but there are plenty of private organizations who are interested in, you know, uh, treating people humanely. That's churches. Those are, you know, other nonprofit organizations. We should be working with those to try and solve this problem holistically rather than just, you know, in a silo.
Thank you, John. Catherine?
Uh, yeah, thanks. I, um, so I agree with a lot that's been said. Alexander touched on two points that I've made previously, and that is you have to, we have to figure out what is causing a person to be homeless. So I, I put them in three different camps. One is, you know, that they're, um, mentally or emotionally unstable. And if they need us, I, I think we need to bring back the hospitals that we had previously to help care for individuals like that. They're ending up in correctional facilities and in homeless camps, and that's not where they're gonna be helped. Secondly is the drug addiction problem. And I am an advocate of handing, uh, a hand up, not a hand out. And so if you receive any kind of subsidies and help, then you will be required to go to rehab. I think that's fair. I think it's just, I think it's almost cruel to keep on handing out, um, the ability to stay crippled, right? So I, I would, I wanna see it that way. And then the third category is the one, the individual that doesn't want help. No, thank you. And it's like, well, then, then you don't get it either. I mean, that is a choice, I'm saying, you know, we all have to be responsible for some of the decisions. It sounds heartless, but it's not. I think it's more heartless to keep somebody crippled. So. And I love the charity organizations. I think they're doing a great job. But also they, the regulations sometimes interfere with their charity. Like if they wanna donate food, it has to be store-bought and food, et cetera, et cetera. So remove some of those regulations.
Thank you, Catherine. Gina?
Um, thank you, everybody. I think we all touched on different points. We do have a lot of nonprofits and organizations that they're the experts in this. They know the day-to-day. They have the relationships with the people who are in this current situation, because some of these situations that they're in right now are circumstantial and some of them are more chronic. And these organizations, like the ones mentioned, as well as home plate who serve specific populations, they're the experts. And so I think we need to work with them and take their lead and support them however we can. And homelessness is such a hard thing because it's technical solutions versus adaptive solutions. And both of them have to happen at the same time. Adaptive, as we talked about, use the word holistically, looking at our values as we make these technical decisions. And, um, it's a big, it's a big thing and a big challenge. And because it's, it's such a personal thing, because we're, we're working with humans. So lots of different things and organizations need to come together for this.
All right. Thank you all so much, um, for participating today. You've handed voters a very difficult decision and we want to wish you the best of luck. Now we're going to hear from city council candidates running unopposed. Each candidate, each candidate has three to five minutes to discuss their candidacy. And, uh, councillor Rick Van Beveren, we're gonna start with you. Welcome.
Uh, thanks, Deanna. And it's, um, first of all, I want to acknowledge and thank each of the candidates that are vying for the open position. Uh, I know what it's like to, uh, do the work, um, and run for office. And I hope, um, to serve with one of you. And I hope that the entire, um, group stays involved and interested in city government and governance and, um, all of the challenges that we face as a city and in some way contributes. It's been a pleasure and an honor to serve on the council these past four or five years. I've learned a great deal about the governance of our city. I am happy to report that we have a tremendous city, um, really competent management, a passionate council, uh, that's, uh, works collaboratively with, um, our, uh, city manager and department heads to, um, really, um, make Hillsborough a great place, the great place that it is and the great place that it'll become. Uh, we have many challenges though, and COVID has thrown us a curveball. So we have people that are hurting, really hurting. We have businesses, small businesses that are really hurting. So that, that number's among the most challenging situations that we face currently. How to serve those residents that are really in need of help. But there's a lot else on our plate, a lot of priorities that we're pursuing. Planning for housing, uh, that meets the needs of all of our residents, addressing houselessness, uh, as we've, um, been discussing. Promoting equity diversion, diversity and inclusion, uh, environmental sustainability. We all know that, um, climate change is real and it's got, it's impactful and we're gonna have to plan for it. Delivering essential services has been kind of what I've been driving. We, we have to be excellent at the services that no one else provides to our citizens. So delivering those in an efficient way is really important. Uh, improving our transportation infrastructure. I'm a transportation land use guy. Served as, uh, president of the TriMet Board in my prior civil civic service. Um, so I'm interested in all modes and, and improving, uh, our, um, commute times and congestion and ability to walk and bike around our city. Uh, we have a trail system that's really, uh, admirable in the works and the planning stages. Promotions of our, 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 our community and culture. Again, COVID's had its impact on those, um, really, uh, features of the city that are very important to our, um, community. Uh, and then of course, uh, doing what we can to, uh, support schools. So those, that's a rundown of the things that we've been tracking on or, or, and are interested in. I would say, um, in terms of essential services, I'm starting to count, highlight our new, um, high-speed internet service, municipally sponsored as a utility, essential utility. Uh, it's, it's, I can't, it's inconceivable, especially during COVID, that we, um, have everybody connected and everybody, uh, online and able to get the services they need. So I'll leave it at that. Um, again, uh, thanks to all of the participants today and for the chamber for sponsoring. And, um, I hope, look forward to serving with one of you. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Rick. All right. We are going to turn it over to councillor Anthony Martin. Good morning.
Hello. Thank you so much for the time. I apologize. I'm also taking care of my daughter, so I'm gonna hold her while, so she doesn't make much noise. Uh, first off, thank you so much to the chamber and the library for this opportunity. It's great to see the chamber partner and educate voters and connect our community. It's also really important that we have a forum for our candidates to get their messages out. And so voters can understand and know them, especially during these unprecedented times where door-to-door contact is impossible. Really grateful to have all these six candidates running and I look forward to, uh, being involved in the community with all of them. So a little bit about me. My name's Anthony Martin. Uh, I have a master's degree in public affairs with an emphasis on local government. I worked in the public sector in finance and economics over the past six years. I, uh, love this community and I really wanna make it a better place. I'm passionate about local government and making sure that it works for everybody. A couple of things over the past four years that I'm proud of is, uh, residential composting. Uh, starting up our broadband internet highlight, the councillor Van Beveren mentioned. Uh, also our COVID-19 support. I think there, there's always more that we can do. But I think we've done a good job trying to make sure, uh, that our residents and businesses have the support, uh, during these very tough times. A couple of priorities for me are, uh, maintain, maintain infrastructure. So, uh, the most fundamental purpose of a city is to provide that infrastructure. And I will make sure that the city prioritizes building and maintaining infrastructure, including highlight. Uh, supporting small businesses. You know, small businesses are the heartbeat of our community. And the economic crisis that was caused by COVID has impacted them disproportionately. I wanna make sure that the city supports, I wanna make sure that the city supports them and we provide, uh, support so they can grow and thrive in our city. Finally, I wanna build community, you know? Our community, uh, our city becomes a community when people, uh, connect with each other and feel part of the city. So I wanna make sure that we can build a place where people feel like they belong. Um, I value good governance, financial sustainability and getting the community involved. I'm always available. You can reach out to me, uh, anthonyforhillsborough@gmail.com. You can also go to anthonyforhillsborough.com to, uh, learn a little bit more about me. While I'm running unopposed, I wanna make sure, you know, I don't take any votes for granted. So please reach out to me, ask me the tough questions. And, uh, your voice matters. So please vote. Please, please vote. Can you wait, Juniper? Can you wait for them? Yeah. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Um, so that's it for the day. I wanna thank you all very much for participating. I also just wanted to make a note that, um, Mayor Callaway wanted to be here with us today, but he is actually traveling to visit with his father. So, um, we gave him a pass and, but he did want to express that he, wished you all very great luck and wanted to be here. So, great morning. Thank you very much for your engagement in this really important process for our community. I wanna thank Kristi and her entire team at the Hillsborough Public Library. I mean, wow, outstanding. Thank you so much for allowing us to be a part of it and, uh, really, uh, an impressive event that you hosted here today. Kristi, any final words from you and your team?
No, but thank you. This was so wonderful. I enjoyed all of it. Um, I'm sorry if I had to time you out, interrupt you because you all had said, had so many great things to say. Um, I think it really gave the community an opportunity to see all of you and hear you, which is our goal and what we wanted. I do wanna remind everyone that, um, we have a secure ballot box at both the Brookwood and the Shute Park libraries. Please vote early. It's very important to vote early this year and, um, bring your ballots in to us if you'd like. And most of the county libraries have ballot boxes. If you wanna know where other ballot locations are, call us, um, 503-615-6500. And, um, someone on the phones at the library can give you more information. Um, again, thank you everyone today. This was really wonderful.
Excellent. Thank you and enjoy the rest of your day and enjoy the rest of the weekend. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.